All right.
Yeah, we are good.
I'd like to open the September twelve twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. First I'd like to do is have Nick O'Beal and lead us in the flag of allegiance. Flag through our right.
A flag to lead us to the middle of the United States of America. Into the Republic of which stands one nation, united by indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Nick, thank you. First item to add on the agenda. It's a continuation. Of what we're calling Zero Maple Street. Assesses map. Uh thirty seven lots three and three A. Can you bring us up to speed?
Sure, so the if you recall where we're at with that, we've had the first round of peer review, which came back sometime last month. It's been a little while. There's pretty significant work that needs to be done for that. So, um. The applicant is continuing to work through those comments. They believe that they're actually going to be submitting next week some revised plans. So with that, they are requesting a continuance to September twenty six to present the new material. The second peer review letter won't be there at that point, but I think it would be good to everybody to get up to speed on. Cause I think there's going to be some significant changes. I would. Rather, you know, get an update in a public hearing rather than wait until a second peer review comes back. And now you're kind of wondering what changed with the initial review. So, um, they request a continuance to our, our second meeting in September, so September twenty sixth. We're good with our decision deadline as well. Um, so that is the update.
I'll move to continue here.
Any discussion? Before I call for a motion?
Um, to continue the hearing till September twenty sixth?
Correct.
We have a motion to the floor. Do I have a second?
Second, Nick.
To continue discussion to September twenty sixth. Uh, what else do we have on that agenda?
The only other item is fifty four Menden Street.
Okay.
And they will, uh, they'll be presenting their revised plans to us. So that's also undergoing peer review. I don't know if we'll have the peer review letter back by then, but. It's basically going to be a just a brief overview of what has changed from the initial submission.
Okay.
All right.
Are any further discussion before I call for the vote? What I'd like to do is call for the vote by name, so we can address the attendance.
Nick, aye.
Brian, aye.
Phil, aye.
Bill, aye.
Steve, aye.
Motion passes in Nantucket. An additional list of letters here. Along with our most senior. Uh Harmony.
Oh boy.
So.
For lot releases?
Yeah, Harmony is looking for lot releases for the next phase. That's. Station eight hundred to sixteen sixty. Um. The DPW went through the surety amount, which I included in your packets. So they, they recommended the four hundred ten thousand to be tagged on to the next page of the surety. Um, which, you know, Harmony has no issues with. So what I would recommend is voting, it would be two votes to set the surety amount at four hundred ten thousand dollars for that next phase. That would be the first. Motion and the second motion would be to release the lots fifty three, fifty four, fifty five, fifty six, fifty seven, fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one, seventy four, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, seventy eight, and eighty. Along by lack of as that next phase. In case anybody.
Expression.
Sorry, go ahead.
Four hundred and ten give us enough point over if we need it.
Oh, correct. That's, that was what was, uh, calculated by DPW, not the applicant. So they, you know, they go through the mass DOT bid estimates. So.
I want to entertain the motion. You'll increase the, um, the bonding for four hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Yep, to set the surety, four hundred ten thousand dollars for this phase.
I'll, I'll, uh, I'll move the question. I just have a question for our folks. It's second.
Okay, I need a second. Uh. We have a second. We have another discussion.
Um. Are they, I don't know if you know, but have they been moving along with their affordable minutes as well?
Yes.
It is different things.
Yeah, they have, so. They're moving along. We're getting all the updates through the building department. And there's a couple of things to just. Give you an update on what's going on, because there was a few other off-site mitigation items, like there's some things on Cross Street. I don't want to get into too much detail, but. Um, we've been working through some issues with the initial decision. And, uh, I think they'll be in front of us for. I think it'll be a decision, um, amendment for specific mitigation off-site, so. Um, which will be, it'll be good. I just wanted to give you the update that there are some decision items that. Haven't been touched yet, but are currently in the works. So in case you look at them and say, oh, what about this and this? So just to let you know, um, yeah, I would imagine within a month or so, they're going to be back on it last thing. I'm going to have some recommendations.
Okay.
So just to keep you in the loop.
That lighting we voted on as well.
For Bungay?
Brook.
The, the solar ones? Okay, I drove.
Yeah, that's cool.
I drove through there, uh. Last month and saw that it's a good looking site. It's coming together nicely.
Which one is in?
Okay.
Yes. I was in the other day.
Yeah.
Switching back, um.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
I digress.
Harmony. Uh, I know I've heard people asked about the sidewalks. And the street, they're, they're not, we're not close. Being finished. Putting sidewalks in, in the final pavement.
No, I think what people need to understand with that project, it was phased, so not a lot of projects. Are phased due to the sizing of the project in Bellingham. That one is just because it is a substantial sized project. So you'll notice that parts of that site now have berm. Um, they haven't put the sidewalks in yet, but they're going to. And I believe there's actually a portion along one twenty six that they might have actually put down the final pavement on that section. But as you drive further in towards Cross Street, that's the newer section. So you're going to see that there's portions that don't have berm and don't have like the pine pavement yet, and that's. It's all part of the phasing, which they've been working with DPW like hand in hand. I know DPW's been down there doing the inspections frequently. Um, but I do recommend, like, if you guys have a chance to, to drive in there, it's, it's shaping up.
I would also recommend going through Bungay Brook.
Bungay Brook is.
It's remarkable.
It's impressive, in my opinion, how I was. I, I was genuinely surprised when I drove through there and seeing how. Tight and clean the site is. The detail and the plantings, the lighting is up, it's. It's pretty nice, so.
Did you notice there are no parking signs? In front of people's houses?
I did not.
Yeah.
I don't.
They have, they have no parking signs for the development.
Yeah, so.
Some people don't park in the street.
Yeah.
So getting back to.
I'm sorry.
I confused myself for a minute about Bungay.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to bring that up.
No, yeah, different project. That's okay.
There is a motion. Uh, on the. For, for the surety bond to be four hundred and ten thousand dollars. But Harmony, we've had a discussion. Any other discussion? Like to call for the vote?
Nick, aye.
Brian, aye.
Phil, aye.
Bill, aye.
Steve, aye.
Then I would need a, um, motion. For approval of a lot, um, certificates, technically. A certificate of release. For lots fifty three, fifty four, fifty five, fifty six, fifty seven, fifty eight, fifty nine. Sixty, sixty one, seventy four, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, seventy eight, and eighty.
Is it those lots again?
There, you can read them off your, your documents, sir. I knew that was. They're right in front of you. Any other discussion? Do I have a second?
Second, Phil.
We have a motion in the floor instance second. I'd like to call for the vote.
Yeah, aye.
Brian, aye.
Phil, aye.
Bill, aye.
Steve.
The motion passes in Nantucket.
And I have the certi- three copies of that certificate to be signed.
Okay.
So to do that tonight, but.
Just make sure we sign those before we leave, because it can be stamped tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The way that works is we basically do the handoff. We get the certificate of the surety, and then that's when we release this document to be recorded with the registry.
Money in hand before the release.
That is correct, so.
Bring us up to speed on the two oh six Mechanic Street. Welcome sign.
Okay, so, two oh six Mechanic Street. Went through the decision, as you know, going back to July. I forget the exact date, but we had, July thirteenth, we had our site visit. Um, to basically go over some of their mockups, we had some pretty robust discussion out there. Uh, shortly after they did submit a rendering and based on our site visit, I know I crafted an, an email to kind of get. A summary of what was basically suggested, discussed, and. Essentially what the town would like to see for the welcome developing sign. The developer also mentioned a few tweaks as well. So. Based on input that I've received and just from that meeting. Um, I basically crafted this recommendation letter because the way that the decision is drafted. Essentially, the board. Or committee that's formed can offer recommendations to the building commissioner. As, because he's basically the approving authority of the sign, because you need a permit for that. So what I did in your packets dated today, I, I created a, a letter for recommendations for the sign. And I can go over them right now. I know that this has been a. Hot topic at some of our meetings, so, um. Number one is regarding the grout lines. I know that during the meeting, there was one and a half inch grout lines on the wall, which. Looked a little bit too thick, and we bas- basically stated that the minimum they could do to keep the wall structurally sound is one inch. So we would like to see the minimum grout line is one inch, since that's what is the minimum to allow the wall to be structurally sound. Two, the proposed color scheme, um, they submitted those colors to us with the, um, rendering, which was tricorn black letters. Alabaster background, which is an off-white. Um, and that's included in attachment one is the rendering to this letter. Three is. There's actually going to be a second part to this recommendation, because there needs to be a vote that's changed. But we discussed how the decision had a requesting or requiring an, an approximately ninety linear foot stone wall as part of the sign. When we were out there, the developer mentioned that. There's a couple of options that they could do. If they wanted to do the ninety linear feet, that would go substantially down Maple Street. And there's that variation in elevation that's pretty significant. So they could either follow the, the topography to go ninety linear feet all the way down, but it would look a little bit odd because. The wall would basically drop with the elevation of the road. Or they would have to keep the wall height level, and you'd have basically this massive. Stone wall that would look very odd. The other option was to reduce the length of the wall, which would be approximately sixty linear feet, which includes the sign itself. Um. Now, because the wall is shortened and there was ninety linear feet that was proposed, there was, uh. Some suggestions during the site visit that. Well, is there a way to maybe put some nicer deciduous trees along the frontage where there's some sparse areas? The developer is completely okay with adding that, so. I ended up talking to them. They said, you know, four proposed trees. With the, um, they would use the white oaks, which were the nice ornamental deciduous trees that are along the front. And they can put that in areas where. Like they have, it's, I think elm trees or. Some type of evergreen that's smaller, so they can mix those in. Four. Going off of that is prior to them installing those, myself and Tim, the building inspector can go out and actually pinpoint the areas where there's the sparse trees, just so they don't go anywhere. And then. Five. Part of the approved landscape plan did have plantings in front of the sign, and they're still going to follow that approved planting plan. I just wanted to make sure that in the recommendation letter that. I mean, it's. It's approved. They have to do it, but it's in the recommendation letter too. It's. Backup. So those are the recommendations that I have. Um. I don't know if there's any other suggestions, questions, whatever you want. Um, the one thing I will say is that because there is a. Change to the decision regarding the ninety linear feet to sixty linear feet. Um, that would require a vote to amend that decision. So what I would do in this case, just so you're aware, if we took the vote, if that's what the board wanted. I would have. I would sign this letter, submit that to, to Tim, and then also have another letter that goes to the town clerk to just put on record that the vote has changed. From ninety when your feet to the sixty when your feet. And that we've. Are voting to submit these recommendations to the building inspector, so. If that makes sense.
Yeah, can I just make one comment?
Um, you're the chair. You can do what you want.
I don't wish to. The, um, picture we have. Is not reflective. Of which one is going to be in. If I'm not mistaken, this is seven seventeen.
What?
No, that's not the sixty foot. I don't want people to be confused. That this looks bigger than what we agreed to. In the picture, so this will be separate, correct? This will be the only document that they get. It won't have this with it.
I included the rendering for the purpose of the color for the stone and the color of the sign, because it was the tan stone, not the gray. I see a look of confusion over there.
I was going to bring that up. Is that worth, is the color of the stone worth including?
I can add that to this. Yeah, you will.
We did, I guess.
Yeah.
Hold on, I don't say it.
Yeah, what I can do is I can add, I would. Since the color scheme's on two, I would just change, I'll add a third, just saying that the stone, we looked at two colors and the tan. Color stone is what was agreed upon.
Fine.
Well, are you saying that this rendering isn't? Doesn't depict a sixty foot wall?
I don't think it does.
No, this does depict the sixty.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure it does.
Yeah, that is, that is the correct.
All right, I thought we had been down there in July.
Yeah, what happened was the. When, just to clarify, because there was discussion, initially, we were talking about forty five feet. It was thrown out there during our site visit. The approximately sixty foot linear feet comes from the width of the sign. Which obviously has stone wall underneath it, perched up on that, and then. There's an additional. Twenty feet inch on either side. So.
So this is not representative of when we were there. This is accurate as of sixty feet.
Well, there. We didn't have the full. Wall. There, it was, you know, this, this was the rendering to show what we discussed at the site visit.
Okay. That's fine.
At sixty feet, does the wall, like the wall on the other side? Bends the curve?
Yep.
So this will also bend the curve?
Correct, it would, yes. And it's. And it's.
Flat, then.
No, and it's, it's. So there's. We have a plan that has the limits of the easement, and it shows the location of the curve of the wall.
Okay.
There. So, but I can even put. On number three, stone color, tan, and curvature per approved plan.
Whatever you think.
Yeah.
I, I just, it looks flat on this picture.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of tough with the rendering, so, yeah.
That's my only concern. I don't want people to think that's what's in the local.
So it's a total of four trees they're adding to get rid of all that. Fronted. Although.
Yeah.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet of stone versus four trees.
Were the, um, plantings in front of the wall? Was there a? The plant types, was that, was that on the planting plan?
Yeah, you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, my only concern would be that. Uh, I just wouldn't want to see anything overgrow the, uh, Purple Heart community.
That's a fair point.
There's a lot that's what they're going to find that.
Um, yeah. It. What, a lot of, you mean a lot of plantings?
Oh, I don't know. There's plantings.
Yeah, I'll pull them up. I've come sort of prepared. Give me one second. I'm taking a minute to find these. There it is. Trying to zoom in on, so we share it. Yeah, so none of these plantings in this area have been. Planted yet. So there's actually plantings behind the wall, which are going to be taller. There's this, which I believe, that's a ground cover mix, which I believe is juniper, but I can, I can pull it up exactly what they're doing. And then on the sides. They have these plantings as well.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so there won't be covered in the, in the front. See. That is. Okay. I'm going to stop sharing for a minute so I can start zooming without giving people vertigo. We don't want that. That would be a first, I think, for a planning board meeting. Well, I looked that up. I don't know if there's any other questions, comments.
So while you're doing that.
When, when you finish that, I'd like to put that back up there and ask some questions about this. About the. Plan. Is it? Finish what you're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, so the. That HHR in front of the. Sign is daylilies. If they're pots, so, you know, they're not going to grow up too high. I'll pull that back up there, Phil.
They're waiting on us to, to build the wall, or?
Yeah, I told them to, to hold off on, you know, doing anything until, you know, this was discussed and recommendations were submitted to the building inspector.
When I look at that. There's a lot of trees there. It, it looks, it, it looks like there is a lot of more coverage than what's there now.
In this corner? Absolutely. I don't think these trees haven't been planted yet.
All the way down there and even up, even up the other side, though, right? So, so what's there now is not.
I have to verify, Phil, because I know.
Yeah, I mean, just, just going up Maple Street, I mean. The amount of plantings, plantings that are there is not representative of what's actually there now.
That was a little more robust.
This is, this is, yeah, that's what we were looking at and looking at that, looking at this versus looking at. Driving by and seeing it is not even close.
Hmm, yeah.
I don't think that's fair. I, I think that's fair, that this is not a, this is not a representation of what.
Yeah.
Drawings.
And I will.
The drawings are correct.
The drawings are correct, but just what's there now today is not.
And what is actually there.
No, I will, I agree, and I think the limits of this corner, I don't know where the, the landscaping has stopped, because there hasn't been any, like. Inspections for their CO yet, because they haven't requested. This needs to get built first. So.
What, what are we missing for, that needs to be built?
The wall.
The wall first.
And easement has to be, um. Yeah, has to be conveyed, so. There's two items which are tied to the wall, and obviously. This area, like if you look right now, if you recall from our site visit, this is just a, a long seeded mound currently, because.
Yeah, this, these, this shows all these trees here, all, I mean, plantings all here, here, all these plantings. This particular, what's, what's one QA? What is that? And any idea what that is? I mean, that, that. Those are.
There are trees in the front there, but.
Yeah. Not that much.
Not this. Well, yeah, like I said, this corner hasn't been seeded or, or, uh, planted by any means, because the wall. They're going to have to put a footing in, so they're going to have to have a little mini excavator in there and. Okay. That work, but.
So are they under the impression that? Um, what's not? On the property that's on there has to be approved, or are they thinking that they're done with it except for what's in front of the wall? Because I don't want to invent some confusion with these guys.
Yeah, so just to continue, continuing with that thought. I would like to see, and I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but I would like to see that the agreement that we're sending all with, so it's him. Calls out this. As in this drawing, this page in the front of that building. Clearly, so there's no questions whatsoever, because this is not the same. I mean, there's a lot of work there, like you just said.
Yeah.
Done, and I just don't want a year from now trying to go back and say, well, that's the drawing.
Yeah.
It needs to be, I mean. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but.
So I, myself, I think it's simply an additional line. You know, I, item number six. Um. In accordance with the material provided, an accurate decision. Please refer to page ever.
Yeah, just to emphasize the fact that, you know, the, the corner needs to be, I mean. The decision has this as the approved landscape plan, but I can typically understand if we want to emphasize the fact that, you know. You have to plant per the landscape plan, so.
So we're going to have it two places. The decision. And then reference to the decision in this one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Rob, is this plan dated back to the decision, or is this an updated? Landscaping?
This is dated back to the decision. This is the approved plan, which was May seventeenth, I believe.
It almost seems like that wall is. Sixty feet. It doesn't even look like it. A ninety foot wall was ever proposed, uh, depicted.
I agree, and that's because the decision, you know, I. Listen, this was drafted way before my time. I don't know. Where the discussion between the ninety linear foot wall came from, because I don't. Recall in our meetings that we specifically stated a ninety linear foot wall, and we may have, I don't know. Um, this is going back to my time when I was the associate member on the planning board. Um.
The first meeting was on Zoom too. That, that long ago.
They, yeah, this, this is a dated project, so I don't believe that the ninety linear foot wall is shown on here, and I believe. That's why you see. A pretty vacant area in here that hasn't been planted, because. Before there was any decision made. The assumption was a ninety linear foot wall, which, looking at the plan, because you have that steep drop in the elevation, it would look. A little funky. I think it would actually cover most of the plantings, which isn't really the end here, so. That's. Where I think the disconnect is. With the size of this wall and the approved plans, and then decisions saying ninety when you're feet. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with going to this. And I don't, the rest of the board, but I'm okay going to the, the walls as it's in the drawings. I just, if this is the. This is the landscaping plan, this is the expectation, and on the top of that hill. All the way around that corner, there's stuff there that needs to be, that will call it out, and. And yeah, there's adjustments that need to be made, fine, but that many trees and that many plantings were involved, and that's kind of.
No, I hear ya.
We need to have a thorough chat on this.
Yeah.
And immaterialize. Naturally. To what they put in.
Yeah. And.
But you know, if, the only way you're gonna tell if they put all the plants up according to the plan is to actually go out there, after they do it, you have to look at it again.
And that's to be his job and the job of the builders.
That's why it's going.
So they can, so we're gonna have a document and an additional letter.
Yeah.
Outlining what has to be done.
Yeah, cuz.
And I do agree, the, um, the sixty feet makes more sense than ninety feet, because it will look weird. Either being very large or just comparing that into the soil.
So, what I recall, I'm gonna put this back on the share screen just so you can see it. So the area noted as sparse on Maple Street. I believe is this area where we have this row of evergreens and then if I recall correctly, these three trees were planted, and that's kind of where the limits of the landscaping that's been installed kind of ends. This stuff, I don't believe has been planted at all yet because I think they wanted to construct this welcome sign first, do the hardscapes, and then do the landscaping install, so.
It sounds like for all agreement that these got called out.
Yeah.
And Tim and yourself are the people who enforce it, right?
Yep.
What, do they have their occupancy permit now?
Now.
What point are they, do they get the preliminary one on there?
I think they have, I have to touch base with Tim because I don't know the exact term, but there's the temporary CO which they need, I think, in order to work inside the building, if I recall, because they, the last I recall, they were building office space inside the building.
Okay.
So.
So we're still good as far as.
Correct. Yep, yeah, nothing's been closed out, so, okay.
Can I ask you a question, maybe it's bigger, I'm thinking it. The plan, the landscaping plan contemplates a ninety foot wall and plantings around it, we're contracting the wall by thirty feet. Does that, does that mean that the landscaping around it is also contracting and are we creating new gaps?
So the landscape plan on here, I don't believe ever showed a ninety linear foot wall. I don't know where the ninety linear feet came from. Um, so believe it or not, by bringing the ninety linear feet wall back is gonna be more in line with what we have approved here. Which is why it's, in my opinion, it's better because the ninety linear feet would end up coming down, oh boy. Oh geez, sorry, the ninety linear feet would bring the wall down into this area, which would start covering this, and as you know, it kind of, there's a little bit of a hump and it starts to slope down, so it would cover these plantings, perhaps to shift them up a little bit.
Right, so I just, my concern is, is if, if we say we, we want a literal enforcement of the existing planting plan, landscaping plan. Will a literal enforcement of that, now that the wall's smaller, make the, make like, there's a bed that goes twenty feet that way and twenty feet that way, and it doesn't, you know, the wall ended twenty feet ago, but we have this bed and plantings that don't necessarily now correspond with the lack of the wall.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think it might cause a gap, but I think what we can do, I can word this to be manageable to the point that quantity, size, per plan, location per plan. If the wall, con, the wall location causes any issues with the location, then they have to discuss with, uh, Tim.
You don't think it's worth them submitting a revised plan showing the sixty foot wall showing adjustments and, like if we, we want a great gap.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I don't think that it would, I mean, we can ask for it, I don't know if it would really be justifiable, I think it can be very easily managed, um.
I think another option. Taking what you wanna do, we can put language in there that based on the, uh, current plan, putting a sixty foot plant in there should incorporate it in such a manner that there are no gaps let, open spaces left between proposed and new plantings by the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Something to that effect. So it's filled, yeah, we can deal with, with language, I believe.
Yeah, I, and I hear what you're saying, and I think that.
You could manage that and, and you're, you know, uh, my concern is that with this particular project, things that have been expressly stated and have been implied have, have not always been followed, so I, I just want to be careful, we think through it all, that we have this flower bed that goes off into the distance, it looks stupid now because there's no wall there.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, so I have faith that you will handle that.
It's the nicest thing you've ever said.
I feel uncomfortable saying that, but. Uh, that would be my concern, because maybe then we need more than four trees, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Whatever you want to say about that.
Yeah, I almost sort of think the opposite, eyeballing that wall, it even seems smaller than six, sixty feet.
It very well could be.
Just comparing it's even just the parking stalls, right, the, that might, it widening to sixty feet, that might push out some of the number of, of plantings that are shown.
Which I want to take.
I, I, yeah, I know, it.
Yeah, that wall does seem small.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it, it might be.
Can you ask them, Rob, what is represented here in the plan?
Yeah, I know, it's sixty.
It is.
Yes, we discussed it, so, oh, on this plan.
Yeah, on this plan.
Um, I think you're referring to, to the rendering.
No, 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 not the rendering.
Is there a scale?
I would, I would clarify and or calculate on scale, that way we know.
Yeah. I, so here's the.
That's, that's covering that coin pretty bien, though.
So this is thirty. That's one of these, so that's, no, that's about a forty foot wall.
So that's not even sixty.
Yeah, so it would go out twenty feet on either side. It.
We're still gonna give.
You're basically gonna be.
The less plants.
Yeah, see, see how far that goes up though, I mean, compared to the parking areas, that, that's covered, look how far that is over here, that's covered, and you're adding four.
Yeah, the, and all I'm saying for the size of the wall, though, the limits, just eyeballing this off the scale, the limits of that wall are going to be pretty much between those two trees, the, on the corner, so between these two. That's about sixty feet. So that's how that's going to, to occur. So with these plantings that are higher, that are gonna poke up above the wall, then they might have to just ship a few back, but it's manageable, we, we can get it done.
I trust you.
Careful.
So I would entertain a motion.
He just rolled his eyes at that.
Did I, I, I thought I was doing it inside my head.
No.
I just can't explain.
Really feel the love.
I would, I'd entertain a motion. To approve the two oh six, we can actually, welcome sign written in ancient. In accordance with the approval condition, number three of the decision outlined here, so shall we have the breath of verbiage?
Yeah, I think, I think we have the, the verbiage described, I, I'm gonna add a three or revise a three and add a six, but we're going to add tan colored stone curvature of the wall, as well as referencing the landscape plan for quantity, the size, and then a description about the location per the plan. If it ends up contradicting with the size of the, or the orientation of the proposed wall will be at the discretion of, or the location will be at the discretion of the building inspector, so what I would recommend is just of, the motion I think should be recommend approval and send sending the recommendation letter to Tim Icardi with the, uh, additional modifications per this discussion.
You said all that, right?
I did.
Okay.
Rob did.
I'm on your first second.
Second, Phil.
Any discussion? My only thing is visually apparent, full of room at the end, integrity questions. I feel comfortable. Alright, no questions. Motion passes announced. Do I need a second motion?
We should have a vote.
I would, yeah, I would vote on that and then there'll be a second vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Go on.
Go on.
Steve, I.
I thought we already voted, they started the discussion. Okay, what's your second, what are you?
The second vote would be, um, an amendment to condition number three per the May twenty sixth, twenty twenty two approval to modify the approximately ninety linear foot stone wall to approximately sixty linear feet.
And you want to make reference to the September twelfth document there or not?
And you can make reference to the recommendations per the September twelfth, twenty twenty four, uh, recommendation letter.
So you said all that, right?
I did.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Phil's second. I have just one quick question, is this like one of those minor major changes?
Yeah, I mean, this would be a minor change.
So we don't need to do that? Otherwise, we'd have to notice a public hearing and all that.
Yeah, the major would be, you have to, and this is, I mean, really, this is a, this is a very minor.
Right, so we don't need to make a determination that it's a minor change?
Correct.
Oh, for the move.
Decka.
Ryan.
Don't we call one?
Go on.
Steve.
Motion passes announced. Thank you for all your work.
Oh yeah, no problem, sorry, I know this one was a little bit painful from. David.
Realistically, they won't, I would think they're gonna run out of time to do the plantings this fall.
Correct, so what will happen is I don't really know what's happening with the tenant for this space, I wish I had an update, but they might even have a tenant, I don't know, I haven't really been in contact with them, they're really dealing with the building department currently, um. If they do decide to have a tenant, they'll have their temporary CO, but the official CO will be held up until this and the easement are taken care of, so. So if they do run out of, um, planting season, which they probably will, it's probably gonna take a little while to get the wall installed.
Easement, is that the, there's no issue with the back um, detention basin at this point?
No, so just an update on that, they had to actually maintain that basin as part of the order of conditions for conservation. So they actually were granted their certificate of completion for that because they had to, I think the actual term that they used in the, uh, order of conditions was deforestation because the basin, since it's been constructed, I don't think had been mowed or touched, when you, this is a two acre basin back there, so when you're walking in the middle of it, you think you're in the woods, because there's trees that were grown up, and that was part of the development next door, I forget what that, uh, yeah, Lindenmeyer was the, 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 uh, building next door, so that has been addressed, so.
When, when he means trees, you should have seen him pulling those things out.
It was, it, it's good to see that it was maintained.
Finally.
Yeah.
And it don't maintain it moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I kind of like the idea of a wooded basin, it was kind of cool when you're in there, and you're in the woods, it's great.
The role. What was it? Just two sentences or less, the trees are bad for the basin?
Well, it takes up volume because of the tree trunk, uh, so, and you want to be able to maintain the sides and cut them.
Oh, I get you.
And it's harder to maintain a basin with a chainsaw rather than a mower. Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, so let me stop sharing this.
Next time when the engineer is the bylaw review appointment, Rob, can you bring us up to speed on that?
Yeah, so this is back up again because I know that we did appoint, right, we, you guys appointed Phil, the vine to the, uh, to the bylaw review committee. Um, the Conservation Commission had two members that were interested similar to this board, and, um, I thought that it would make sense since there was some interest to land use boards that had two members that were interested. It would make sense to go from five members to seven members, so I brought that in front of the select board and they seemed to agree, so, um, that was what has occurred, so essentially, there's now uh, one citizen, which hasn't been appointed yet. There is a select board member that has been appointed, there is a ZBA member that has been appointed. There's two conservation members who have been appointed, and there's one planning board member, but there's a vacancy for the second. Um, what will happen is, is appointments have been made, but it's up to the select board to make the final appointment to actually form the committee, so um, basically, once this is done, they'll kind of grace the subcommittee, and then that's when we can start meeting. So that's the update.
When would, when would the, do you think the group would meet?
I was hoping for the end of September, because of the select board meeting schedule, it will probably be mid-October that we have our first meeting.
So are you thinking what particular day and night, like once a month kind of thing?
It's gonna be, I would like it to be once a month, I mean, if the, if the committee wants to meet more collectively, they, you know, I can accommodate, but what I envision for this, this is my thought, and mind you, I'm just the staff member to help this along, and it's really up to the committee, but I would envision one meeting a month to basically get our ducks in a row. And I think the first couple of months is gonna be more of a steering committee to figure out what exactly we want to do, I have plenty of recommendations on how to approach this, I think for each town meeting, it would make sense to have basically a work order list of three certain items potentially for each town meeting. We tackle those, and the biggest thing, because with zoning, there's a lot involved, and there's gonna be a lot of uh, coordination with town council to make sure that we're not violating anything. So what I don't want is the members of the subcommittee to feel that they have to start drafting, like, you know, zoning language from scratch. What I would hope to do is, is that we discuss during the subcommittee meetings. You can give myself and Tim Icardi as the other staff member recommendations, we can do the drafting, we bring it back in front of the subcommittee, you guys discuss, we tweak, it's basically what we're doing for the MBTA subcommittee, it's what we did for the Hartford Ave zoning, uh, for that overlay, and it worked well, um, it wasn't a huge time suck for the members, and it's just a way to try and be creative and proactive and everybody has a voice, and it's all going to be in open meeting sessions as well, so the public can, um, also comment. If that makes sense. So. That is what I envision.
Transparency there is the key.
You know, transparency is critical, that's, that's it, you know? Yep.
I would open it to discussion, who's interested in motions? I, I'd be willing to do it, I'm sorry, I'd be willing to do it, okay.
And I still have interest.
Okay.
Let me make a motion to appoint Brian to the committee.
I will second that for discussion purposes. Do we, do we have a second motion?
Well, you, wait, you made the motion, you seconded.
You seconded.
You gotta vote, you gotta take a vote first, make a note.
You're sorry?
There could be, there could be discussion, but.
So motion is second.
Yes. Okay, discussion? Any, anyone else interested?
Um, I feel like I've already been pointed to, I wouldn't, I'm already interested, um.
I, my feeling is, I think, the experience on the zoning board is gonna be helpful. And your experience overall.
Who did the zoning board, uh, appoint, please?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I will call for the vote. Nick.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Go on.
Go on, Steve.
That motion passes and then. That motion passes and then we're congratulating. But I want to also encourage all of. This is an open. I would encourage you like people did with the Hartford Overlay Committee. What Nick has done with the MBTA Committee is feel free to attend. If you're not in the board, it doesn't mean you can't attend. You can still come to the meeting, make suggestions, and you're competing, you're, it can be heard. The only thing is you're not a voting member, but still wants to be very transparent. So I encourage all of us to try to attend based on the night. I will make every effort to attend. I think as well, other members here.
Obviously, intend to propose a few changes at a time to not overwhelm the public or? Yeah, I don't, I would highly recommend that there isn't a massive overhaul at once because it's just going to be confusing and it opens up. Questions that frankly, you know, the, there could be a lot of discussion at town meeting where there's citizens that weren't involved in the initial discussions during. The subcommittee meetings and all of a sudden, there's these very valid points that come up that. You know, nobody's perfect. Myself, the town council, other people on the subcommittee may have thought, oh, well, this isn't good, so. That's why, you know, little at a time with great attention to detail at each of the items that get addressed, you know? For example, um, I know a while back, there was the discussions about the drive-through bylaw. Um, because we don't have any regulations right now in the zoning uh bylaws. And that, that was never proposed because at the time. There was the proposed zone change on Hartford Ave to allow the gas station with the drive-through and I know. The board was concerned that if you mixed in the drive-through. Bylaw change at town meeting when there's a drive-through being proposed that was extremely contested. That people would be confused and that's why it never ended up going.
And it's, it's time to update.
Yeah, but that, but that's, you know, this is a prime time to add that, you know, that's a great example of something that. You know, if you have three items, that's one of the three, or you could do four, five, you know, depending on the size. It's all these things.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion? Um. What if, maybe not the initial meeting, but what if one of the first meetings you came with all of your. Concerns about our current zoning bylaws to the group?
The first.
I don't know if I've ever read through everything in detail.
The first meeting, what I would like to do is actually do a brief PowerPoint on zoning, not. Not overall zoning, just bellingham zoning bylaws.
We get into like, hey, we should change this or that. I think I would like to know what you feel are the most concerning things about our current zoning bylaws.
Yeah, the intent is to have this nice and structured. I don't want to just, okay, what do you guys want to do?
You know, people get, it's, I mean, this topic is obviously very important to a lot of different people, a lot of people that, you know, are even here in this room, right, in the public, so. I think it helps to have some context as well, so yes, going over zoning, but also I would like to know your opinion of what you think are issues that. Need addressing and maybe kind of ranking them. So you're, you know, you've mentioned the, the drive-through thing, so that's probably a, a higher priority than maybe something else.
Yeah, and it's a, that's a higher priority because it's pretty much, it's already been drafted and, and ready to go. It's just needs to go in front of town meeting. Um.
And then I, I wonder too, should the subcommittee kind of come up with its purpose? Didn't we do that for something? The Hartford Ave Overlay?
Yeah, we, we, well, we, we attacked the purpose of the overlay itself, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to come up with something that's to keep us all sort of goal oriented and, and kind of.
Focus.
I think a purpose is a good idea to keep to direct.
Yeah, maybe with input from the public as well.
Definitely.
And there's probably some things like, for example, the um, the apartment, um. The, the in-law apartment rules that.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah.
Updated based upon were out of, completely out of date and, and if there's, and with you're and Tim and. Dennis's recommendations, I know there's probably a couple of those that probably need to improve as well.
So this is actually very timely because I don't know if everyone's aware, but Massachusetts just passed. State law that basically allows accessory dwelling units by right. It's no longer special permits.
Yeah.
Nine hundred square feet, correct?
And it's like, I think it's capped at nine hundred square feet. So right now, our accessory dwelling units are, it's special permit for in-law apartments only.
Yeah, isn't it?
Which that's.
You gotta be relative.
Yeah, which that is now gonna be complete, have to completely go away. It's not in compliance with state law. We would. The way that the regulations are stated right now currently is that you don't have to change your zoning. You'll be in compliance. There's no compliance. It's not like MBTA where. You have to change zoning to be in compliance. What the state has said is in their guidance documents is that now these regulations bypass anything that's essentially requiring a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. So. What needs to happen is. Our portion of our zoning bylaws that has the accessory dwelling units, or it's actually a family apartment special permit. We need to revise that section to be just accessory dwelling unit. There is different provisions that the state has basically given towns to act on, so. We're still waiting on final guidance documents, but there's no requirement for in-law or relative occupancy. There are requirements for the maximum square footage that you're allowed, not allowed to go through the special permit process. There's a couple other zoning things that were mixed in like merging and unmerging lots, but there's. There is a provision which we're trying to figure out if it's a requirement or a suggestion from the state that if you wanted to do. A second ADU on your property, that can require a special permit, but. Trying to figure out if they're saying you're, you can do that or you're required to allow a second ADU by special permit. There's parking requirements too. The biggest thing, which is so important, especially in Bellingham, that our in-law apartment has now. Is provisions for existing septic systems. Meaning if you're gonna add a unit, you gotta show for the building department to issue you an occupancy permit. That you meet the septic flow requirements per Title V. And that still stands because you can't fight public health, so.
You, you still, you, so you can build a nine hundred square foot addition or freestanding structures required, provided you still comply with setbacks?
Correct.
Okay.
Inseptic?
Inseptic, correct.
But you can rent it out.
Yeah, so, so any residentially zoned. Area in the state. Is now a multifamily zone.
Essentially, yeah, but you have to meet the zoning, so if you were to do a structure, you know, it's, it's very, very.
That's what we need to pin down.
That's exactly it. That, that, that is critical for zoning right now because that is an active February of next year.
I don't know the topics.
It's not that it's similar to MBTA or it's out there and they've not fully defined it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to find out what it is.
Yeah.
Did the board, did the Board of Health also have a, something that they pulled back from? Um, town meeting recently?
Yeah, there was something I think regarding like domestic.
There's one of those ticking around and then I know that you had your underground detention basin that was.
That was a discussion too. Now, because we updated our regulations, our Bellingham procedural rules.
Yeah.
That stuff was pretty much added into the MS four. It's not that specific, but there, there's a, yeah, there's a lot of information that, a lot of information that was added to those regulations, so.
So it sounds like there's topics that we have to address because there, there's new regulations to deal with and then there's the rest of. Okay, what do we want to achieve and accomplish? What are, what are the goals? How quickly do we want to reach the goals, et cetera?
Correct.
Can we make the next town meeting and that cannot be?
Not for November.
Well, it's not gonna be November, but spring, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Can I ask you a question?
You're the chair, you can do what you want.
Um, are there any bylaws out there that we may not be compliant with right now?
That's a loaded question. I, like, what are you referring?
I, I don't know. Is there some, are, are there any areas we need to tighten to be more compliant?
Well. I think the ADU one is the big one where. We gotta be careful because it's not the way that the state has written the regulation. Like MBTA, for example, there is compliant and non-compliant. If we don't have the MBTA zoning in our regulations and our zoning bylaws. We are not in compliance. For this, we don't have to change our zoning, like if we require a special permit for accessory dwelling units. Which we do, and if you require uh relative occupancy, which we do. It's not that you're in non-compliance, it's just bypassed by state regulations. That's the way that they.
Wouldn't we want to just update it and change it? Like, why leave it in there if it's gonna get bypassed?
Absolutely, and we also have to look at too, the way that we've kind of. I don't want to say we've skirted because that's not the right word, but the way that. The, the way that multifamily developments in town have been hindered. Is there is a specific lot requirement, area requirement for specific. Type, like if you have a multifamily unit, a two-family, you're required double the required lot area. So for example, if you're in the agricultural zone and you want to put in a two-family, you're required for a single-family house, two-acre zoning. You do a two-family, you need four acres, which is, that's substantial land area. So we have to look at that too in our zoning table to see if it makes sense to, to change that. And this is a big, you know, town council question that'll be guiding this, so. This is good. I wasn't expecting this much of a conversation about this stuff.
I think I did show some, which would be important.
Yeah.
And then all of us should participate.
We could talk for hours about some changes.
I mean, we could have the first meeting of an ad hoc bylaw committee right now.
Correct, and.
So maybe one last question from me, I guess. The zoning, would the actual changing of the zone from industrial to business to residential, is that out of scope for this committee?
Oh, absolutely not. If you want to change zoning, you know, so. This is where coming up with like a, a work plan is gonna come into effect because. I have ideas for zoning that I think the town should really look into, but it's gonna take a lot more effort than writing up. Zoning bylaw, like a, a, a drive-through bylaw. I mean, we can look at areas. The biggest thing that I know I've mentioned in our MBTA zoning meetings is the center of town. That's an area that it's come up in just about every single board at one meeting that people have said. Center of town could use some work and the way, the best way the town can do that without actually developing, because we're not developers. Is through zoning, so that's gonna be a big task, so perhaps that's one item rather than three that we look at. For a town meeting, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yes, and I think, you know, you look at um. I, I keep looking back to the Hartford Ave overlay rezoning that I know myself, Liz and Bill were on. That, that committee, I thought it ran, it ran well because. There was a select few that were on the committee, but really like the residents of that area were driving the conversation as much as. The people on the subcommittee. And that's what I think needs to happen for this subcommittee because it's not, it's not a voice of the few. You know, we need direction from everybody because this is a town decision. And um. I personally am really excited about it and I think that, you know, a lot of other people are really excited about it too and. I'm just, I just want to emphasize that. That's how I envision this being run. Similar to that and MBTA, which is also driven by a lot of discussion from the public, yes, so. Anyway.
Can I ask a question to the MBTA?
You're not the chair, but you can do what you want.
How close, are you guys coming to town meeting this summer?
Yeah, we have a draft um of the, the bylaw that Rob is um wrapping up and getting ready for town warrant, which is due. Um, late September.
Yeah, the, the warrant article closes September twentieth and it's posted October fifth.
Yeah, I mean, we, we only have until the end of the year to, to be in compliance or to have voted to be in compliance, um. You know, so we have to get this at town meeting. If it doesn't pass at town meeting, I think we can attempt to call a special meeting before the end of the year to try to get it. Over the finish line um to, so that we can be in compliance and not lose all of our, our grant money, um. I, you know, I think what did our consultant say, Rob, that anyone who has submitted. Even those that were due at the end of last year have not heard back. Um, but most towns are in compliance. There's maybe. Ten or twelve communities that have voted, either voted no or have said we're, we're not doing it, um, but most I think are submitting plans.
And the other thing too to note with this, because this was my biggest concern, was if. For some reason, the Attorney General removes the, our, what we're proposing, it gets approved at town meeting, we submit it. Um, let's say they have concerns with something, they have issues. What we were concerned with and we were talking to our consultant about was, and our town council too, was, all right, if this is, if we're considered not in compliance. Are we gonna get the book thrown at us immediately and say you're not in compliance, but. What our consultant and town council has mentioned is basically, you know, if you're, if you're showing a good faith effort, the line of discussion, or there's discussion. With the Attorney General to figure out what's wrong and see if there's something that we can tweak. Um, you know, you're not going to, to see any enforcement or they don't think we will, so. You know, I think that that's critical that if, even if. The key is to get this to pass town meeting and then if we have to make tweaks and bring it back to another town meeting, hopefully in the spring, if that were to happen.
Do the tweaks include red lines on the Attorney General? Cross right out and say, okay, this paragraph we don't like.
Potential, I mean, I guess, but I don't think the Attorney General has responded to most. Submissions, like they're overloaded with submissions. Yeah, and they said there's some sort of staffing problem over the summer, so I think, I don't know if we'll hear back. If it, everything goes smoothly, it passes, we submit it, I'm not sure, or. I don't know, if it doesn't pass, I guess that's a different conversation, but.
Yeah, and we, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna say, I don't think we're gonna hear back in a super timely manner. That's my guess.
Yeah.
Good thing so. So.
And the critical thing too is, is that if for some reason there was an issue with the review from the state that, you know, it's critical that. We get direction on what is wrong and I, that sounds like that's how it's been handled in the past. It's like, you know, there's an issue with the article that you've gotten approved. Like you said, there might be a red line, but they're saying this is why I'm crossing this out, so I don't know if we'll have the opportunity to add something else. Or if we just have to cross it out, I'm not sure, but um, there's a lot of uh.
This is new, yeah, new, new frontiers.
It, it is, it is, and we're doing our best to try and stay ahead of it, but.
Two, two, two things I'd like to add. The Hartford Overlay, they did call us during the end and said they were confused on one issue. We were able to discuss that, address it, address the concern, and it was approved. It was a very minor conversation. Secondly, on the twenty sixth of September is our next meeting, which is open to the public. So it's, it'll be at five thirty, an hour and a half before our meeting.
Yeah.
So if you have any questions.
On this topic.
On, on the MBTA.
With the recommendation from the planning board?
No, just an open discussion.
Just an open discussion, so it's, you sometimes warrant articles come.
That's, that's. That's that one.
Yeah, that all that will happen.
It will, and I actually have that that date, all those dates worked out. A matter of fact, what I'll do is just because this is a big ticket item. I'm sure people, you know, are, I know people are asking about where this stands. I'll shoot an email to everyone to let you know what my predicted timeframe is as far as how this is gonna go because, as you know. With zone changes, the planning board has to recommend to the select board, then the select board has to recommend back to the planning board. Which then becomes the public hearing. I have it all mapped out. It's in my office. I will get that to you guys. So you're just aware of. When this is going.
Maybe that's a bylaw change to smooth that right, so.
I think that might be mass state law, but I don't know.
Um, like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes on the August eighth meeting.
Actually, I had some questions to be honest with you. Um, so. First one's the public, and I get, this might be one to look up later, Rob, like if you could confirm the public hearing. Fifty-seven Memphis Street was, the site improvement plan dated really two thousand nineteen, the second part of.
No, I think that's a typo.
Yeah, it just, if you could just confirm that, adjust it as needed.
Yep, it would have, I think it was actually. Actually, it might have been.
It might be true, but I just.
I'll verify.
Verify it.
Yeah.
The second thing was the bottom of page two before last something starts, Mr. Divine letting Mr. Prozey know that. He is looking forward to seeing the special permit. I think I was looking forward to seeing the revised plans. So I would offer to strike special permit and put in revised plans.
Correct.
And then the other, Mr. Divine now was at the end of that paragraph there. Um let the public know that the fire chief is going to stay involved.
Um, very.
It's.
End of that.
End of the, end of that next paragraph on page three. Was it Mr. Divine or was it uh? If you can let it stand if anybody's memory is different.
I think that was, I think that was, I think that was you, Mill.
I think it, I think it was.
I think it was too. So I would, I would recommend that change and that would be the only changes I had.
The similar to um Phil, where he changed the ice circle special permit too. You'd like to see the special part?
Yeah, it wasn't special. It was, there was definitely a special permit conversation, but it wasn't there.
Yeah, yeah, it was the wrong word.
Yeah.
But the very next sentence talks about me of so very requesting to know the density, what the density of the project would be. It was a little more nuanced than that. It was what the calculations for the density under our. Whatever regulation we were talking about that time. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know. It was basically the calculation of density based on the upland area. So.
And there was a discrepancy in the calculations.
Yeah, what I will do is I basically, we can, we can change that sentence where it'd be Mr. Salisbury requests you to know what the calculation. Uh of density would be based on project upland area, yeah, well, upland area. Right.
Make a motion to approve that, ask a motion to approve the next with the events. Have a second?
Second, Phil.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
So, you buy.
The other items, uh.
There's one that. Stop it. It's one, one item that you just skipped, which is just very quickly this open meeting law certification. So um our HR department sent an email over. I guess the state actually offers, it's a little certification program. For open meeting law. I plan on taking it. It's all online. Um it's nice to kind of. Get a refresher on open meeting law because I know, as we know, there's. Tricky to make sure that you don't violate any open meeting laws as far as like with the Zoom option, for example, and. Making sure that if something's continued, you know, not discussing those items and just all that stuff. So. What I was going to just say was if anybody was interested in taking that online course, I don't know how long it is. I can get you more information. I can actually send you the Zoom or the the link from the website.
Is it required?
It is not required. It is not.
I would suggest we all do it.
Yeah.
I'd be very interested to see how long it is.
Yeah, I can, I'll send the information.
If it is twenty minutes, that makes one decision. If it's six days, that makes another decision.
I don't need six days.
I know, I'm being sarcastic.
I understand with your PC education.
I'll um, I'll get that info. I'll get that info and send it. I'll be honest, I should have looked at that before even discussing this on the agenda, but I totally forgot about.
That brings up a question.
Oh, no.
When was the last time, uh do we have to take ethics training at all?
You take it when you're appointed. I don't recall if there's any um, there's any requirement for. Like renewing it.
Fees will get for all of us have a refresher at some point.
Yeah, they offer refreshers, so I believe they do. Yeah, let me talk to uh. Well, let me talk to the people that know these things, which is not me.
Okay.
But.
I know, I know Jim, I'd say, he pride his leaving, that he could do it as well.
Yeah, I think with the ethic, it's the the conflict of interest training that everyone is required to take.
Yep.
Um. But that I'll look into it.
Thank you, yeah. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So.
Driver's second.
Second, Phil.
Maybe Brian's second, I feel. I assume there's no discussion. I will call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
He, bye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wait, Billy, answer.